All right, welcome, Jeremigos. Welcome to beautiful non-Barcelona.
But I had a lovely thing this afternoon. I got to go to a park and I realized even just going to a park, seeing some different scenery feels like a mini-vacation, even if it's not a beach.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes touch grass is really what you need, don't you?
Yeah, it's literally getting prescribed now by doctors I've run, so I'm all for it. And also enjoy my fun video. It's like super slow. It's like ghosty motions for some reason. I don't know what's going on. So it's getting close to Halloween, so my camera must be haunted.
It might be. So, all right, we are still going through our study sessions for the ACP 420. Before we do that, we do have some local news regarding this. Somebody we know very near and dear to our hearts, he passed the 420. Congratulations, Al. I mean Rodney.
Yeah. You had me for half a second. Yay, Rodney.
Congratulations, Rodney. He made it through. He said it was a little bit tough and got got a score lower than what he was expecting, but you know.
Passing's passing.
Passing's passing. So the certificate that you hang on the wall doesn't say, you know.
Yeah, oddly enough.
Yeah. Just passing. So.
Here's the thing, you get to brag when you get a high score and then you just don't mention it when your score is not as high, because again, it's passing. I'm so curious. I'd love to hear when he's back, like what the breakdown was on how he did and the areas that might, was it like just overall? Or was there a specific area that could have been lower than another? Because I tend to drop in one area.
Okay, right, right. Usually there's that weak spot area and then all the other areas are are super strong, so they make up for it. Yeah, that's probably going to be a good thing once he comes back and you see what we'll ask him what his test experience was like.
And speaking of, so that's cool, because then we saw today, oh God, I've just forgotten her name, but the service management evangelist that we've been seeing on the Barcelona stream. What's her name? Her name just left me.
I
I'm gonna get there.
Um, Chrissy Clements?
No.
Okay.
Um. She is joining the triumvirate that is now her.
What, I mean like Kate Pollock from Epspio?
No. She works at Atlassian and now, of course, my whole internet stuff, please.
I know too many people that work at Atlassian, but unlike Alex, I don't rank them into a top five.
Well, goodness, not. Not, not, not. Masonia Scott. I was like, I'm gonna get there. So Masonia Scott is the is the service management evangelist. So she's doing the live stream stuff and the show hosting.
Oh, with Mark and with Stan.
Yes, yes. So we're going to get to celebrate her evangelism along with the, you know, acquisition by Rodney and then we can do a little nudging with Alex.
We can, we can, we can definitely see, hopefully she will appear on the show sooner rather than later.
Yes.
All right.
So what do we got? I know we're starting with automation, which as I wrote today.
We are starting with automation. So when we last left off, we were looking at incident management, right? We're trying to configure JSM so that it could cover the various quota, and I like to call them the books, the books of ITIL. And one of those books is, and there's a book for each management, right? And this book is incident management and we can use some of the features in JSM in particular automation rules to help guide us to help make things easier when we have incidents. And so we can see about taking a look at using Jira automation rules so that those use cases, you can dig them and you can use them. You can use automation rules so that you can meet those requirements. You can see about creating an automation rule that would automatically create a bug when you have an incident. Or, and then you could use a different automation or maybe even the same one to automatically add watchers, some of the responders, the customer that originally reported it. And then a new, a third automation rule that could be done is sending Slack messages about newly created bugs.
Hey, do me a favor real quick. Sure. Could you expand the side panel for me for a moment? Because another interesting point that mayor may not be in here yet when it comes to automations is number one, I feel like every day I open up automations and I find a new action or a new trigger or a new something that can be done in automation. So I'm kind of thinking about that and I was just going to do a quick look. And what they don't have in here yet, I would say, is the run books, right? I don't see anything in here yet unless it might be under there, but run books, which is like, you know, next level automations to kick things off. And you know, maybe go restart a server, go restart a service. So that also can help with your incident management. But it can be a multi-step kind of item and you get responses back on it. So a lot more involved than just a solitary automation rule.
Yep.
Yep. So we don't see that in here.
We don't see run books in here, which is kind of a pity.
Yeah.
Because it's kind of a default. A lot of operations people live and die by run books.
Yes. All right. So let's go scroll through then and we'll see some of these automations that they recommend for managing incidents such as automatically creating those bugs.
Yes.
So when you use JSM, so you know, one of the automations, when something happens, trigger, let's go create an item in another project perhaps, because we know maybe that software project where is managing the development of that particular item that now has a bug on that.
Right.
So what we can do, yeah, and that's exactly, again, I'm not even reading, but I'm glad I'm saying what happens to be showing up here. So, and I was about to mention that you're still going to be beholden when you do your automation. So whoever the actor is on those automations, just like we talked about once upon a time with moving items from one project to another and those related permissions. This is where those related permissions are going to come into play. Because in order for you to be able to create something, you have to have the permission to create or your automation actor is going to need that to be able to create the bug, need the permissions in order to be able to link those two items also. And one more quick tip on this, because I trip on this almost every time and it makes me mad that my brain just can't seem to remember this. So telling you, telling myself, if you want to keep those two things in sync, if you want to create that bug, have that link and then say when something happens on that bug to update your incident, that automation is going to have to be a multi-project scope, meaning a project admin over in your JSM project and a project admin over in your JIRA project are not going to be able to write those things. It's going to have to be done and put in by a product administrator.
Or you're right, a JIRA admin and not a project admin. That's a really, really good point.
Yeah, because I can't tell you how many times I'm like, oh yeah, we could talk, DM it. No, I can't.
Yes.
It may have happened to me just recently.
That's the one thing about automation rules is that a project admin, like a JSM project admin, could create an automation rule, but it would be scoped to just that one project. If you need to go beyond the scope of a single project, you have to be a JIRA admin. So.
Yeah.
All right.
And I've seen many, many feature requests saying, change this. There was some, if I'm a project admin and two of them, let me do this, but I digress. All right. So some basics of automations, we always need a trigger and we always need an action, but in between there, we can have conditions. Do this when, but only do this when certain items are met. And personally, I'm loving recently that your trigger, you can put your conditions right there in your trigger. So hopefully it's eliminating some of the runs of these automations and keeping our usage numbers down a little bit, especially for those of us maybe on standard or, you know, unlimited automations.
Yep. Very, very good points. Yeah, if remembering that with automation and automation rules, if the execution does not go beyond a trigger or a condition, if it stopped there, doesn't count in terms of your monthly automation rule execution budget, as long as you have an action that is performed and we're talking about real actions, not like putting an entry into the log.
Exactly.
Yeah, that doesn't count. But so a trigger is the important part. That's what kicks off the automation rule. And in this one, it's basically when JSM detects that a work item has been created.
For this example one. Because as it says, so you could trigger that off of when something's created. You can trigger this off of maybe a status change. You could trigger this off of when a form is attached to something or when a form gets submitted. And then one of the things they mentioned here too is a manual trigger. So maybe you don't just automatically want to create a bug when an incident gets created, but somebody does some triage and assessment and then goes up and selects that manual, that action over on one of their issue details and drops that down and triggers the automation that way. Because if you don't do that, you could end up with 10 bugs because that incident got reported 10 times and then all kinds of, you know, extra work to undo things.
Yep. All right. So when the trigger has been triggered, we may want to further explore and that's where we use our conditions.
So in here, I'll take over for here. So there's work item field condition. So yeah, make sure it's the incident work type in this regard. And then even in here, you could even have a special incident request type on top of that, because maybe not all incidents should be triggering the creation of these bugs. You could have this based on a work item field also, so that our summary description that they contain certain words. In this example, they're using the word infrastructure. But what are those things that you might automatically want to create the bug from? What are those things that they're going to have in common so that you can find them? We always recommend doing them based off of field values, while it's possible to do it off of JQL values. Not generally as a sure thing, as it is with your field values. And so there are, I'm reading work item field conditions twice. That's why it tripped me for a second. Ensure a field like environment has a value indicating that a specific team should handle the incident. I, and then I was just about to say, yeah, and I would well imagine affected services would be on here so that we know what service, so that maybe we can go find out what, what software project is managing that service so that we can create it in the right place. And like they say here, a tier one level service or tier two or whatever it is. So what is all, what are all the criteria or characteristics of that incident? That would go, I gotta go create a bugger now.
Yep.
I think I just said bugger, which is kind of funny.
I think that, I think that would be the new, the new work item type.
Bugger all.
Bugaboo. All right. We've got the trigger. The trigger's triggered, the automation rule. Conditions have ascertained whether or not the automation have further ascertained whether or not the automation needs to be run. The automation needs to be run. What do we do?
And in this one, it's a really simple action. So we're going to go create a work item over in that software project. And when we create items, we have options to say, what kind of work item do we want to create in the? Well, first of all, what project do we want to create that in? And what item type do we want to create for that bug, right? So hopefully they have a bug option over there. They might not. So you pick something else. And then you think about what are the required fields? Because that's another part of the tricky things when you start getting into multi-project automations is to remember now I'm working in a different project. Maybe they have certain fields and values that are required. So I have to know all of those items to get them into my work item create. Otherwise your automation's going to fail. So yes, if they have those fields and it's always a good idea, severity, environment, effects, versions, anything that you can pass over to help explain that bug, that receiving team is going to appreciate it very much. And then also you have the ability to use that link so that you can say the item that, actually this is, yeah, because now we have to use a second action sometimes to link the item. So it goes and creates the item. And then you create the linked work item action and this is where you can use a smart value. So like the most recently created value or the most recently created issue, I think is actually a dropdown in there that you can use. But if you were doing it in one of the JSON panels, you can link it and say, or link back to the trigger item that works too.
Yeah. And so part of this linked work item action is as the new bug, as the new bugaboo gets created, the, when you perform this action, you actually have to create a branch so that you're affecting the newly created item and not the item that triggered the automation rule. And as Sarah mentioned before, because she is right, this would have to be scoped to at least more than one project. So it'd have to be created by a JIRA admin.
Yeah. And I'm going to take issue though, real quick with the idea that you have to use a branch because you could really do it in the advanced section and just like it to the trigger issue. But anyway, it is advanced. So this is the easiest way, the most UI way to do it.
You could, but if you're doing it the advanced way, something tells me that it's involving REST API calls and you're creating it. And sometimes that makes my head spin. Just, no?
No, no, you just, it is, it's actually a pretty simple one. It's just a matter of knowing what link type, whether it's inward and outward and then putting in the trigger item. That should be how you, but again, this way is the, hey, I may be newer at this and still using the UI and I'll use the UI because that's easier and safer a lot of times. But here's what we're looking at is exactly how that automation. So we see green, green are our triggers, yellow are our conditions. So it's a tier one service. And we did that based on a, on a field value and then create a new bug over in the mobile development project. And if you're following along and thinking, this is really cool, just also remember you have to set the project. Doing a project dynamically is really challenging. So this is keeping it simple. We select that particular project and then this is where that branch comes in and it says, okay, so now I've created something. So for all created work items, then I'm going to link that new item over into with my triggered item. And even select the link type, right? This incident is caused by this bug, for instance.
Yes, exactly. All right. So that's enough of the first one. Let's take a look at that second automation rule. So, or maybe even we want to add on to this automation rule and maybe automatically add watchers.
Yeah, let's make sure people know about this.
So again, we've got our triggers, we've got conditions, we've got our actions. Let's take a look at what could possibly trigger our automation rule.
So once again, we're using our friend, the work item created trigger to examine all newly created work in your project. And our condition this time is again, multiple ways to configure these conditions, but we can do it based on a field condition that checks to make sure, hey, did a bug get created? We can also, once again, make sure, hey, our affected service or environment fields is that meeting the criteria for us? We can check to make sure, honestly, you can make sure, has a bug already been created for this? We don't want to create another one by chance. But a work rated, a related work items condition. In this case, it is a JQL to ensure the linked incident meets the specific criteria, being in the right project or team. I'm seeing more and more team stuff.
Yep.
And so when you use the related work item, the rule scope must include multiple projects. So here we go, hammering that point home. I should have done this, this video before I was working on it myself. But yeah, so our JIRA admin is going to come to the rescue and help you create that one.
All right. So we've got our trigger, we've got our conditions. What does the automation rule do?
So our action this time is using an action manage watchers, which again, the list of actions just grows day by day. So to be honest with you, manage watchers is one I might have just skipped right over. But you can absolutely do that and it's going to have you pick users. Again, this, when we go to the example configuration, it's probably going to keep the simple route through the UI where you're going to select, and we can go ahead and expand that. It's going to have you select users in that manage users. I imagine you get more, more better, more experienced and better at these automations. There'll be ways that you'll learn where you can dynamically figure out maybe who those watchers should be. And that's exactly what we're seeing here, right? So our green trigger, when it's created, when our work type equals bug, so now we're on that bug side. Oh, and sorry, I was still doing it from the first side. Now we're in the software project. And so we're checking, hey, does this have any linked incidents to it? Now, if so, I'm going to go ahead and add those watchers. Now I noticed their linked work items only matched project and description equals website. But as I said, I would probably also throw in there, is it an incident, right? What kind of item is it over in your JSM project?
Right, right.
And our good friends, Alana Grant and Harold Jennings.
Okay.
Because they appear at all these trial instances that we use.
Alana's been around. She does a lot of stuff.
Oh, she's so cool. The original Alana Grant is though, like who was that based on?
I don't know.
Legendary. So what else can we do, Bob?
We could also use an automation rule to notify the team in Slack about bugs.
So first you have to use Slack. We'll just put that prerequisite out there.
Yeah. So there, there are ways of setting up automation rules and then integrating to chat apps like Slack and Teams. Yeah, don't.
Yes, other ones. There are other ones.
Yeah, don't, don't find me alone talking about Teams. So it won't end well. Anyway, let's take a look at what this automation rule looks like. Probably when the bug gets created. So that's, that's my guess for what the trigger is going to be.
All right. I like the way you're thinking. Oh, or when the work item transitioned, they threw that one on there. Just depends upon which one you want to let them know about. And then another way you can trigger things is on a schedule. So maybe you don't need immediate awareness and or want to create that immediate awareness about that bug. Then you could say, hey, once a day, we just want to make sure our people out there understand that new bugs have been created so that they can get in there and triage them. And that whole idea of triaging them, maybe it's why you would select a work item transitioned. Because maybe you want to make sure somebody evaluates it before, once again, you send off all these messages and create this awareness.
Yep. All right. Let's see what our possible conditions are.
So here, once again, we got our work items field condition to ensure we're talking about bug types. We're going to make sure that bug has a severity or priority level. Because once again, maybe somebody's gone through and done that because we didn't necessarily do it when we created the bug originally. Somebody's done some evaluation, made some assessments and has set that severity or priority. And so now, and then the other item you can do is the work item hasn't been updated in three or more days. So you want to keep on top of those bugs potentially. Let's hope you do at some level. Or maybe sometimes they just sit there for a while admittedly. But that way, when you use that condition with the scheduled trigger, as most work items, trigger events would count as updates. So yeah, so goes and looks, hey, when was the last time this thing was updated? And then it'll run on that schedule. All right. Actions. Then send a Slack message.
Yes.
Once again, super handy dandy action item that you can just select from a list.
Yep. And in there, you specify the message. You can customize it using smart values and then you can also define which channel that message gets sent to.
Now, one call out here, you'll need the web hook for your Slack organization. That means you need to be able to go find that or find the person who knows it or get the ability to use that. That's again, probably something you might need, end up talking to a Slack administrator about to get that.
Yep.
So our configuration, very UI again, green when it's created. Yellow, what are our conditions? It equals a bug. Then I love seeing the little Slack logo in there that somebody said looks like four ducks and now I can't unsee.
You can't unsee that.
Can't unsee it.
Four ducks kissing each other's butts.
So then it's going to go ahead and send a Slack message. And when you use that web hook, you're going to include some additional information right there in our little curly bracket, not curly bracket, what are those brackets called? Curly brackets, right? Oh, my brain just said, no, it's not, but it is. That we're going to include some smart values. So we're going to include the key of the work item. We're going to include the summary of the work item and then you could go crazy, including additional information in there if you wanted to.
Now, an important thing about the second and the third automation is that, and we alluded to this earlier, is that they could, if they have the same trigger, you might as well just kind of stack the actions together to make a bigger automation rule.
Yeah. And see, and this is why, just tell me to be quiet at some point here, Bob. So number one, I believe there's up to like 65 different little components that you can have in a given automation, which I used to think was nuts. Like how could you have 65 things? And then I've done some automations. I'm like, oh yeah, I get it. That's number one. Number two is to think about your automations truly do go from top to bottom. So it's going to do the first thing first and the second thing second. So the order of these things matter. And I bring that up now because before we had a rule that had a branch, right? And then it said for the most recently created item, now go do something with that. Well, in these two cases with these bugs, there is now the ability to multiple, have multiple branches. So multiple sort of things happening at the same time. And the key there is saying, these things happen at nearly the same time. So as long as there's not an order of operations that you have to adhere to when you do these automations, now instead of doing this group here and this group next, there are abilities now to do both of those groups at the same time. So I think that's going to speed up some of these longer, lengthier automations.
Yeah.
And so you could be sending out that Slack message at the same time you're adding watchers. I'll be done now.
You can't be done. You're not done. I didn't say we're done. You can't go.
Well, I meant on that part.
Oh, okay. We suppose, I suppose we should do a quiz, right?
Yes.
All right. Andrea is a project admin for a software project in JIRA. Her team works with a service desk team who uses JIRA service management to manage incidents. Andrea does not have access to their service project. True or false? Oh, 50/50 shot. Andrea can't create an automation rule triggered by new incidents in the service project because she does not have access to the project.
True. It's true. If you've been listening, it's true. It's worded weirdly, isn't it? Like the whole first part.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw the, I'm gonna throw the false hat. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw the, I'm gonna throw the false hat.
Yeah.
Uh, so Andrea can't, I think Andrea can't create the automation rule. But it's not because she doesn't have access. It's because she is not a JIRA admin. Because it's going to be scoped to both the software project and the service management project.
Well, yeah, because the service management project is where the incident would be created. And so you can't trigger off of something happening in another project that you can't scope your automation to.
So I, I, I think, uh, so I think it's, I, I, the reason is false, but, but the outcome is the same. She can't create the automation rule. But the reason is not because she does, she does not have access, but.
Oh, see, I think it's because she doesn't have access. All right, let's go, let's go.
All right, so you, 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 you're just going to let me kind of, uh, you know, fall to my doom if, uh.
Or I'm falling to my doom.
All right.
All right, I'm all ready with my hashtag, I believe Bob sign.
Here we go. Oh.
That's what I'm saying. It's like worded in kind of a funny way.
You know, access, access is just kind of, it's a very loaded word. I'd be like, you know, uh, if, if I were, uh, doing the certifications me for this question, I'd probably throw some, some flags on it.
I think this question would absolutely get thrown out. There's no way that's on that exam.
And they flip true, false. All right, that's true. All right. Okay. So given what we've done so far and what we've seen, how incident, uh, how incidents are managed, what tools you have in JSM to do that, let's take a look at how the process compares to the tool. Next lesson. All right, so by the end of this lesson, we're going to identify what everyone's role is during the major incident. So look. And describe the tools used at each stage of that major incident.
Eddie's.
All right, so we've seen this lifecycle before, right?
And I bet we see it in one of your books, Bob, and your.
Uh, maybe I, you know, actually we don't, because I was, I was toying with the idea of doing an ITSM book. Having JSM on it and didn't, didn't quite happen.
And you didn't. But conceptually, let's say, right, there's, there's going to be some overlap, I think.
Yeah.
Between these concepts. So yeah, so we always start with detecting, classify and respond, move into our communicate, invest and recover, then learn and improve. So what do these mean?
So what happens in the detect?
So they notice a new service disruption, right? Because we're maturing in our ITSM management. And so customers can submit incidents through the portal. So somebody tried to make a payment, but they couldn't make a payment. So they go over into the help center and they say, I can't make a payment, which effectively is just reporting a problem. There's a problem, I can't do something. And so we have an example of what that incident might look like. So first, this is our first step, right? We've detected a problem.
We've detected a problem. All right, once we've got that problem, what do we do with it? We classify and respond.
Yes, um, because we're, we believe we're dealing with a major incident. That's why we're going to choose a parent incident if there are multiple related incidents. So remember, you've noticed, you're looking at your affected services and you're seeing that there's eight incidents popping up related to a particular service.
Or maybe they're all in the same queue and you can kind of say, wait a minute, these all look alike.
Exactly. So you just, honestly, it's kind of, it doesn't matter which one you choose. You pick one and you refer to that as the parent incident. I think they could do a better job in the vernacular and the, and the app, but I digress. All right, so you pick one and then you mark that one as that major incident. It has the service identified on it. And then you would assess the impact of the incident, right? Which is to go out and look at all of those other incidents. Then you can start to use your related tools, by the way. And, and actually now there's a similar issues panel. So it probably is already going to start looking at those and pulling them up for you, making it really easy for you to connect all of those by linking them. But you can classify the incident using fields in JIRA Service Management. So they give an example here, she sees many incidents with the same problem, making payments. Like we just said, randomly pick one to be the parent incident, link them all together. And then confirm that the incident impacts the payment service. So do a little bit of that investigation in there. It's a class, well, we're not investigate, what am I saying? We're only classify and responding. So she confirms the incident impacts the payment service. It's critical and widespread, so there's going to be some fields to maybe reset on that incidents in order to convey that type of information. And so that's what we can see here. We see our mobile payments. We've got our warning triangle letting us know there is an incident here on there. And so updating the urgency and the impact to critical and extensive widespread. And then our toggle over on the right side, we flip that and enable it and mark that as a major incident. And what they don't have highlighted here, which I'm kind of surprised by, is if you look up over in the upper left corner now, right under the key in the back, that's our little marker. That's how we know this is our major incident. And out of the box, ITSM service projects will also have a queue created for that. So anything with major incident tackled on automatically lands in that queue. And we talked about operations, so we could have this going out and then sending alerts so that the on-call, it looks to the, uh, to the service, who are those responders? Or I manually add responder teams, it's going to go out there and figure out what is, who is the on-call person currently? What are those potential escalation paths? And then those operations alerts and notifications will also kick off. So, and then as it says in here, as soon as an agent marks an incident as major JIRA Service Management, sends the alert to the on-call responder for the incident response team that owns the affected service. But again, just in case you don't have those in your service metadata, you do have the ability to add responders directly on there. So our lady die gets the call and can go on to the communicate stage. Cause people got to know these things happen. Want to overview that for us, Bob?
Sure. Uh, so you're with a major incident. Uh, we've identified it, we've kind of triaged it a bit, we know it's really serious. And now we're going to communicate, make sure we relay what we know to our customers and stakeholders. So the agents will, will reply to, uh, to let them know that they're working on a solution. And, uh, you identified the, one of the, one of the things that we did before was identifying the, the parent incident. So if you select, so what they're having us do here is, uh, you can select one or more incidents to kind of send out a blanket reply. So my question, because I haven't played with this as much, if you put a comment out to the external customer in the parent incident, would comments then go out to all of the, oh.
See, and this is where I think this whole process falls off a little bit. And that when, I feel like when you select a parent, I, I wish there was a few more out of the box things that, that could happen. Is that you select the parent, you link all of those. And then like a system automation would be created that says, when major incident is commented on, then add comments to all of the other ones. That doesn't happen right now. So that's why they have in here, they've got their incident queue open. They've multi-selected their items, then hit comment. So yes, yes, the same comment is going to go out to all of them all at once, which is nice. But I don't know whose queues look this clean, friends. Like nobodies. Um, so perhaps again, now that list views are available in JSM, that might make it a little cleaner because it's a little bit easier maybe to, um, to be able to filter those, you know, those incidents. But yeah, I, I do think a system rule on major incident management for commenting, closing, et cetera, would be really, really welcome.
Okay. One other tool that we could do is we talked about this, um, I think actually on Monday.
Yes.
Status page.
Yes, we did.
Have our communications person update status page. So that there is a, uh, warning or an active incident, uh, message uh, that appears on that status page portal.
And you know, Bob, I got to sideline or sidebar this thing a second because once again, how I met you was when JIRA was down and got on the show with you guys and we talked about managing incidents like this. And one of the things I definitely remember bringing up, and then it's here too, right? Is, is it's so important to have, especially on major, major incidents, right? Customer facing, high impacting, potentially costly incidents that, that can happen is making sure there's representation, right? So if you have a communications officer, you have that person who, well, I guess with AI, it's a little bit easier now. We could just maybe call on, call on Robo and say, write me a message in this kind of tone out to everybody to let them know what's going on. Um, but what I keep thinking about right now is, you know, if a tree falls in the forest and nobody hears it, you know, does anybody hear it? Well, that's not true with incidents, right? It's a problem if nobody hears the incident. So we got to make sure we're, we're, we're kind of loud about it. And that's what these tools can do is so our status page can write our update out there on status page. And then as we learned on Monday too, we have ways to configure our portal, so that same message appears there.
Speaking of that, as long as JSM is integrated with SAS page, uh, it will automatically add that message from SAS page onto the JSM customer portal.
So, so that you don't have to like keep linking all of those new incidents to your major.
Exactly. There's a little bit of ticket deflection there.
So you know, maybe you also throw an announcement out there that says, hey, it's already been reported, here's the ticket, go see it. Just add everybody I was watching. All right. And next.
So, uh, adding, adding watchers might include the internal stakeholders, the agents would do that. And they would, uh, put them in the stakeholders.
Yeah, so stakeholders is again, one of those pieces of data that you can configure on your services. So you can add people in there and, and you know, the idea is that yes, when you hit inform stakeholders, it's going to send out emails to those folks because they're not necessarily, uh, they don't have product access, right? They might not have JIRA licenses, so they can't otherwise see it unless we push some sort of communication out to them. So that's where informed stakeholders comes in and then you can see how many stakeholders there are. You could add more stakeholders there. I believe there should be a field for that also. And then a newer feature is the ability to create templates. So again, going back and talking about our communication officer, maybe have somebody write up some templates, make sure here are all the details that you need to fill in and inform our people about when, you know, when there is an incident, when something is going on. Because it's sometimes easy to overlook or just accidentally omit some potential information. Whereas templatizing it predictability, right? And also sometimes in these situations, just not having to go through the process and think about all of those things and being presented with it, just to fill something in makes it go faster because you're busy over here actually trying to fix the thing.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so that was the communications part. And you want to make sure that you do this communication at regular intervals so that you're not keeping your, uh, customers and stakeholders in the dark. Uh, the next thing we want to do, we want to investigate and recover. All right, so we're going to focus on, um, identifying root causes and fixing the actual incident to get things back to normal.
So I'll go with this one. So our incident commander, another role for us, our communications person, our commander. And that's why we salute these, because it all starts to feel military. So.
It actually comes from, uh, Google's SRE.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, yeah, there, there actually is a incident commander, there's a communications guy. Then I think, uh, I think those are the, there, there might be two other roles that escape me at the moment, but, but yeah, incident commander and, and, and communications person, uh, those definitely come from the SRE.
Yeah.
Yep.
So our commander sets up internal communications using Slack or other channels. Because I know I personally set it up so that you can also create team chats, team chats for this. And those team chats can automatically include those folks who are part of the responder teams for the affected services. Um, it's so that everybody has a place to come to, to communicate, to update each other. And so this is what, so this is actually also an automation you can do too. So the incident commander doesn't even have to set it up. Getting back to our automations, automation, when major incident gets triggered, go create a team's chat and do all these things with it, right? So this is what we're talking about in this part of it. And then you have a connection, so things happen on the ticket, things happen over in that chat. They stay in, in, in communication with each other. So then our incident response team is going to investigate the major incident in assets. So because services are technically created as assets as well and assets have relationships, because if you remember when we created services, one of the things we could do after we created it was create those relationships, like it depends on or is depended on by. And we can have multiple levels of our relationships in here through our assets. So when we go to the affected service and we click on that little graph icon, it's going to open up the object details for us here. So we could see what are those other services that are dependent on by that or that affect or are affected when an incident happens on there. And so from here, we can see our central one was payment processing, I think, right? That was originally what our example was, somebody can't make a payment. So we noticed that billing is connected to this. We notice our payments up there, our backup nodes, AWS, Oracle. Where are all of the places where we might feel some impacts of this incident? And then your agents are going to be able to click on any of these. And then those details are going to pop up over on the right. That includes description tiers. It could even maybe have additional information about who to contact on those, because maybe it's not readily, you know, as opposed to like having to go, I gotta go into, imagine this, I gotta go to my side panel. I gotta go to operations, I gotta go to services and then I gotta go search for those services, right? You're like five clicks and searching in. Instead, we keep it in the context here. I just click on one of those other asset items and I get all of the details that I need. And when I click on one of those, you know, maybe I start to see even linked issues. Maybe there were incidents being reported on some of those other incident, uh, asset types as well.
Yep. Um, and just to throw a little bit of a tease, uh, there is, uh, assets did have a little moment in the sun during the keynote. And, uh, that happened at, uh, Team 25 Europe. Rodney and Alex will talk about it in tomorrow's show in the recap.
You weren't kidding, you are teasing.
Yes, I am.
All right, so if you're watching this way, way, way later, it will be the show that will air on October 9th. All right, so then our incident response team investigates the incident using deployment history. Absolutely, we talked about this on Monday, when we have those repositories linked up, there is that investigate button that shows up at the top for us. We don't have to rehash this all again tonight, but the idea is they can see the deployments and they can start to make some guesses as to potential causes, which is our button down there on the lower right.
All right. All right.
And then ideally, they fix the problem.
They fix the problem.
So when the team is ready to fix the problem, they can use a software project in JIRA to track their development work. So remember, incident gets created, let's go create a bug over here so that team can work on something. And so on a JIRA work item, you can identify the service and deployment number if your project is integrated with a repository. And I imagine there might be ways to gather that information. I don't know if there's ways to gather that information in your automation, but I kind of think there is and I just haven't done it yet. Anyway.
Anyway.
So then lastly, our incident response team result, oh man, this is. So then lastly, our incident response team result, oh man, this is not last. This is, yeah, one little word at the end isn't, I need one more step. So the incident commander can close the major incident, let internal stakeholder, there you go. This is the big bold part. Let internal stakeholders know the team resolved it. Agents close the ticket and comment on it. So resolving the incident, I suppose, by, you know, maybe part of the definition of done, done, done or resolved in this case includes ensuring all of those communications are part of that.
All right. So finally, there is a learn and improve stage. Well, we, where we kind of take a look at that, how, how do we learn from? The, how do we learn from our mistakes, right?
Exactly. Or what are the takeaways? What are the findings, right? Like this happened. Now what? How do we, how do we prevent it potentially from happening again? What's our lessons learned?
So our incident commander will create the post-incident review. And then you can determine in there why it happened, what its impact was and how we resolved it and how to prevent it from occurring in the future.
And friends, I did a whole LinkedIn post about like a personal experience that I did a PIR on. And the tool was actually, it was, it was a good exercise that you can use even beyond software or any kind of, you know, work-related incidents, personal. It works really well for personal incidents as well. Let's take a quiz.
All right. Two questions. Ishan, the incident commander is leading the response to a major incident. He needs to establish communication channels for the incident response team. During which stage of the major incident does he set up communication channels for the incident response team?
I mean, I think the words in the question, but I could be wrong.
Um, I thought communicate was to the customer. And it actually came in here in the investigate and recover. I thought.
You're probably right.
I don't know. I mean, I mean, I mean.
I think you're right, Bob. I think now as I go through it and I hear your explanation and lockdown, I'm going to say you're right.
All right.
I'm glad I listened to Bob. Everybody listen to Bob. By the way, friends, once upon a time, we had a discussion here that given how Atlassian really does wish to unleash the collective knowledge of teams that we want to request team-based cert exams. We should all get in there together and unleash our collective knowledge.
Okay, here we go. This is easier, some easier odds, right? 50/50. True or false? On a major incident, Ishan can click the investigate button to find the deployment history for the service tied to the incident.
Again, this question is doing things that we should not do on actual exam questions. And that is making an assumption that there is a connection to deployment history on this item. So in this case, I am going to say that this is true when I fill in the blanks about it being available. Agree?
Agree.
All right.
Oh. The, uh, so yeah, there we go. If you find the investigate button, it will let you view the deployment history, including where the service was deployed and at what time. So that would allow you to see whether or not the, a deployment fit into the timeline of the incident. All right.
Well, here's the thing, Bob, we've only got five minutes.
Let's see how big this next lesson is.
Here we'll do it real quick. Can we avoid incidents?
No. Can't eliminate all incidents.
All right. There are things you can do to help minimize them. There are things you can do to monitor your items, right? There are ways to be proactive, but can we avoid all incidents? No. Can we avoid some incidents? Yes.
All right. What are some best, uh, what's the best approach to reducing the likelihood of incidents?
All right. Let's, I think we skip that narrative and go down to the two tabs. Respond to major incidents. We follow those steps that we just talked about. Quickly turn detection into response, escalating to the right people, communicating clearly. Yeah. Like I was talking about, is it simple enough to follow under stress, right? Prompt you instead of you trying to think about all those things and broad enough to work for a variety of incidents. But the second half of it was learning. And so going in and making it a practice of doing your post-incident reviews, which kind of is like, ah, it's like logging your time, isn't it? However, in this case, it really can pay off because it can help you avoid those future incidents. So when you follow a structured process to review them from several angles, you can extract your learnings, find the best place to apply mitigations. And it says honestly, not honestly comma, like it's being honest with us, but honestly examine your organization's shortcomings and commit to repairing them. That's right. There's a whole lot that goes into these things. And yeah, incidents happen, whether we want them to or not. So considering it as an investment, as cheap as possible, but it is an investment in future downtime, right? Avoiding future downtime and then extracting value from each incident in the form of learnings and mitigations, right? Even just knowing, hey, what's the workaround? Creating a new run book for something is a win that can come out of some of these incidents so that your downtime can be shortened by quite a lot if you don't have the ability to get in there and fix that root cause for a while. And sometimes things are just workarounds always.
Yeah. Oh. Practices.
For each. Detect by monitoring and alerting tools or by customers reporting them, right? So using your portals and all the things available. Yeah. JSM definitely can integrate with many monitoring systems. You can do heartbeats. You can have it send in regular reports. You can have it send in when it's detecting something, right? So make use of all of those integrations that you can to do some of that work for you. And then with the operations, note of automatically notifying on-call users when specific criteria are met, which we've talked about before. Is it matching certain priorities, times of days, service level tiers? Create action policies that automatically run diagnostic or remediation actions in response to incoming alerts. So over on the operation side, we do have the ability to, to have automation happen over there. And then again, that's expanding more broadly, I think, into the concept of run books. So when that incident comes in, what are all of the things that you can just point and click and, 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 and trigger something in a different system to happen? Get the feedback of what the outcome of that was and then follow on with your next step. So that I think is where that's going to start to fill in there. Or down later. Oh boy. So classify and responding, creating a severity map, matrix. We talked about urgency and impact. So there's ways we can already go ahead and, and use those to create automations to update other fields. So such as our severity. Maybe it becomes a sub-zero with high impact, high urgency. Or maybe it's a sub-three with a minor incident with low impact. And then for my purposes, I've used that to also then set priorities because it was easier to trigger off priorities over in operations. And then speaking of operations, right? With our escalate incidents and the ability to escalate those notifications and alerts to our on-call people. So agents should not hesitate to escalate an incident to a major incident. What I will say is if you can toggle it on, you can toggle it off. Right? But yeah, you don't want to be the agent who cried wolf now, do you?
All right.
And then lastly was.
Wrap it up with the use JIRA automation.
Yes. Woo. Communicate early, communicate often, always. I like precisely, again, speaking of the agent who cried wolf, make sure you're delivering the right amount of detail, the right amount of information. And make sure in those communications, you are conveying some sort of timelines and being honest and transparent. Hey, we just don't know yet. We're still working on it. Can go a long way just to maintain a sense of, for folks, right? That you're still looking at it. Staying consistent across your channels, whether that's status page and your portals, those comments that you might be adding on to the tickets themselves and owning the problem. So let's see exactly what that one says. Yeah. Is that as, as that agent team or that alert responder, nobody else cares about all the other things going on. You know, you're kind of the face of that incident at that point. And so making sure you're doing that communication with intent. And once again, I'm just going to say this is a great place to make use of some of that AI rewriting, right? Gather your thoughts, throw them at AI and then let AI rewrite them a little bit for you. Maybe to convey the, the tone that is more beneficial for folks to hear as opposed to sometimes the tone you might want to use.
So speaking of, of AI, you know, don't forget to watch tomorrow's show on October 9th.
Tease, tease, tease.
Tease, 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 because AI in particular, Rovo has a major, there's some major news surrounding Rovo on that. You want to, you, you want to listen to that. That's going to be Sarah and me, instead of the entire TJL crew. Rodney and Alex will probably either be still partying at Bash or, or asleep. My money's on asleep.
Oh, totally asleep.
Yeah.
Yes. But they might be posting things like, hey, MCB is over at this bar and see how many people go. Cause that's fun too. Thanks, Chris. Fun idea.
Yep. So that's, uh, that's what's going on. Tomorrow we'll have our recap of the 25 Team Europe. We'll have field reports from Rodney and Alex and interviews with some really cool people like Atlassian's on really cool topics. And hopefully we'll, hopefully it, it won't completely replace the FOMO, but it's some good stuff.
I know. I don't know if you saw my comment somewhere that I was like, ah, it hit me, man. I thought, I was like, no, I'm totally cool. I'm totally cool. And then I see all the posts and I'm like, looks pretty awesome.
Yep. All right. So everybody, we'll see you tomorrow. We'll continue moving through 420 on Monday. Rodney will come back and we can ask him how his ACP 420 experience was. Until then, good night and good luck.